recess over and all the June 17, 2020 meeting of the Dappan County Planning Commission back into order. And I would like the minutes to reflect that we have a physical quorum and we have Mr. they have the same four that were here, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Shul, Mr. Henry, myself, and Mr. Light is here. Welcome back. We haven't seen you since March or something. So later back. Before we get started, or maybe we'll just do that when we get up to the business of the comp plan and the advertising.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I'm I have requested, I hope you receive my email this evening, participate in the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2-A1A. This is Mary Catherine.
I could not receive it, and I did check my email right before I left, and I'm sorry, I didn't see it. But Mr. I did receive one from Mr. Kohler, and I'll tell you pretty much what I told him, which is, this is a continuation of the same meeting as that started on June 17. So there's already been a motion made and voted on. And our rules don't govern this subject, but Rule 36 of Roberts Rules of Order, which are incorporated by Section 10-2 of our Rules of Procedure into them, provides that there can be a motion for reconsideration on the it has to be on the same day, the next or the next business day when the meetings could be. So I think that would be today. So unless unless some member wants to make a motion to reconsider, I think that's been resolved.
I have a motion to reconsider.
Very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll just point out if I may very quickly, without using too much time, that this is the second day.
Oh, just a minute. I'm going to reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting last week. If you want to be recognized, please answer to be recognized, and then wait till you get recognized and start talking. Anyways, while you were talking, Mr. Light made a motion for reconsideration.
It wasn't marital to do so.
Right. I'm just going to say, I think that that's I think that under Rule 36, a motion has to be made by someone who prevailed, and you weren't here. So I guess I don't think you can make a motion.
I was, but I didn't predict it.
Well, I mean, you weren't here and didn't vote on the motion. So you so I don't know. I'll just I'll tell you what, just an abundance of caution. Is there a second to Mr. Light's motion to reconsider? To reconsider the request of Mary Catherine Ishi to participate electronically in the meeting under rule, I'm sorry, under Code 2.23708.2-A1A?
Mr. Chairman.
I assume that's Mr. Kohler. Go ahead.
Yes. May I be amend that motion to include myself?
Well, you can, because technically, you're not participating in the meeting, because likewise, your your request to participate was also denied. So.
All right. Well, I amend my motion that they vote any excluded members.
All right. So fine. Now the motion's been amended to reconsider both of them. It's not on whether they can or can't, it's just on whether to have a motion to, well, whether to reconsider it or not. And then we'll get to the discussion of the merits if this passes. So is there a second to the motion? I don't hear any. So the motion dies for lack of a second, even though it might have been out of order, and probably was. But anyway, all right. So the next order of business on our agenda is the comprehensive plan. And so I appreciate that Mr. Light's here, and he can confirm, we finished our discussion of Chapter 7, which primarily focused on three things, the telecom section, the renewable energy section, and the village maps and so forth section. And we're all done with that. We're waiting. I think the maps and so forth, we finished. We agreed to the text that Mr. Light drafted with a few minor changes that I had suggested. I think we went ahead of that, and we're waiting from our, what do they call it? I can't remember. Planning District 9 to get the map of Spurito, right?
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chairman, let's get a public comment.
We had a public comment last time.
Perhaps a point of order?
Sure. I noticed that the agenda published for tonight, whether it's a continuation or not, is not the same as the agenda from last week. So it seems to me some either a motion to adopt or to change the agenda would be in order. And before we before we go into that, I would like to just say that I would like to really express my opposition, and frankly, my indignation about how I and the two other commissioners were treated last week. I am here tonight under duress for having to be put in the position of having to choose between my right and responsibility as a citizen, as Vice Chairman of this commission, and putting myself and others at increased risk of a potentially lethal and highly contagious virus, particularly when, as demonstrated previously by this commission, there's an absolutely perfectly demonstrated alternative to doing so. And also in light of the fact that the people here tonight, including my esteemed colleagues at the table, are not practicing the behaviors and protective measures that have been recommended by the medical community in widely practice. So with that, I think the agenda is inappropriate as written, and I would suggest respectfully some reconsideration.
Well, what in what sense is it? What specifically?
The May amendments, for example, on the agenda last week.
I don't think we're going to get to them tonight, anyway. Well, does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? That's up on the screen now. I mean, honestly, I don't I'm not sure. I guess I saw it, but I must have missed that, the May amendment. The May amendments have been on there. Weren't they on there? I don't bring us the agenda back on.
They weren't on last week.
Well, I thought the whole business of the thing from the supervisors, I thought they were within that.
They have been on as an information matter in past agendas.
Right.
And I guess if I may, with respect to the agenda, Chairman Conick, I would also note that I believe that it would be inappropriate to expand the agenda, given that the vote taken last week to exclude other members of the commission, according to the advice of our recently resigned FOIA officer, actually puts the actions of the commission at greater legal risk. And so I think the deeper we dig this hole, before that issue is resolved, we're potentially risking our common condition of risking our health. So I just give that to some consideration as well.
Okay. I thank you, Mr. Light, and I'm going to respond in a minute. But is there a motion to adopt the agenda that's up on there?
So.
Mr. Henry moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Does that not show my amendments? Because my version is here. Yeah.
Shows my amendments, number two on the home business.
So we don't want them on? Or we do want them on? We I guess we do, if we get to them.
Well, my point is, they were not on last week, even that.
Okay. Well, the only thing we're.
Move that we adopt the agenda, striking the amendments.
I'll second that. All right. And I have an amendment to the motion. I would like to add to the agenda that in light of what Mr. Light just said, and in light of the I've been trying to push this to the end.
Please don't use the word "in light."
In light?
Since we're talking about Mr. Light.
Oh, all right. I wasn't talking about him. In consideration, thank you, Mr. Henry, in consideration of events as they have transpired at last Wednesday's beginning of the meeting, and since that time, I would like, and I think you all have a copy, to propose to add or propose another amendment to the agenda that we add consideration of the Second Amendment to Rules of Procedure to the agenda. And so that so that the agenda as now on the paper would be, as it's up there, strike the May amendments and insert in their place Second Amendment to Rules of Procedure. So somebody want to second my proposed amendment?
Certainly.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion of the agenda? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go say no.
No.
All right. I vote aye. So the agenda is adopted by a four to one vote. There's public comment on there. So see, two people here. I'll just say that if we are we're definitely going to discuss the commercial area plan specifically. So although it's a little bit unusual, if you if that's what you want to comment on, rather than making your comment now, I'll let I'll give you time to do that when we're actually discussing it, if you raise your hand and want to be recognized. But if you want to speak to some other general issue, this is the time to do so. Try to keep, please stand up and probably since there's so few people here, I just want to record the minutes to note that in addition to the five commissioners, the county administrator, the county zoning administrator, our secretary, and representative of the Rappahannock News who's videotaping, we have two other people are present. Making a total, no, I'm not going to count them in public again. I didn't do very well last time. Anyway, that's the total. So if anyone, I don't know how many people are online, but if does anyone that's present want to speak to some general topic other than the comp plan and the commercial area?
There's a hand raised on the line.
All right. Well, I'm going to recognize the Mr. Taylor. Do you want it?
Yes. Can I clarify that, clarify?
Well, just say that you are in your district, so we can get it down.
Tom Taylor, Spurito, P. Mont District. What I was going to address, I was going to address the, if I could, the RR5 acre zoning in Spurito. If I could make a few comments.
Sure. Go ahead.
We own some property in Spurito. My wife and I do. We bought it over 20 years ago. It was in the family before that. It's owned by someone else for 50 years. It's been in the family a long time. And I'm not, and maybe it's already been decided. I hope not. I was going to respectfully request if you reconsider or consider, depending on where it's the status of it, including that in the village. Now, if it is, has been, then I'll certainly sit down. But if it hasn't, then I'd like to request that it be thought about. Because we do own other property, young commercial property, which I didn't, I don't have to address that, because I'm going to stay longer. But the RR5 acre zoning that we own is behind the D and D Service Center in Spurito. It has, at 211, it has a sewer line along up the side in front of it, or we have one side of it. And it has a Woodbrook Road on the backside of it, maybe a mile long. And I thought it would be pretty conducive to future development down the road. Right now, it's I don't think I don't think we're there yet. I don't think there's enough.
Except just one thing, when you said down the road, you mean down 211, or you mean in the future?
I mean, time-wise, down the road, it may be needed for affordable housing from a standpoint of schoolteachers and ordinary folk, regular folk. So I was just hoping that. And then also this RR5 zoning, like the school has nine golf courses, the field is next to the Spurito Sewer Plant. I'm not sure the technical name of that, but it's the Spurito Sewer Plant, that field. So there is in Spurito, there is some potential, I think, with the sewer line. And we don't have to really worry about the perking too much. There would be it would be a chance to, if it is needed down the road, down in time, that you could maybe make two acre lots or something like that. And that would be. And I'll just go back just one little detail. My wife was the secretary on the planning commission, as you, some of you may remember, 40 years ago, I guess, an initial development of this comprehensive plan. And I spoke with her about it, and she thought her goal was, at that time, was to try to keep the county, just as your goal is, I'm sure, is to keep the county as open, as beautiful as possible, and try to keep the development around the villages. So I really feel strongly that way, and she does, too, that that's where we'd like to see the development. We don't want the development out in the country. And so we're hoping that if you allow something that's in the village, that I always considered was in the village, be a part of the village, I think it would be it would be very helpful. So I would just appreciate your consideration of this, and I appreciate your hard work. I know she said, my wife said, they work day, you know, week after week, and I know you all that, too. And we really appreciate your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. I guess just to briefly answer that, we discussed village maps, and they're pretty much to delineate what the current zoning is now. And at some future time, I think after we get done with comp plan, I think our plan is to go over in a comprehensive way the zoning ordinance that would include the maps. So maybe some things that are zoned for rural residential five might be considered at that time for basically be zoned R2, or R1, or something like that. Or maybe village, I don't know. I mean, I ask Cheryl, she knows better than I do.
Well.
What do you mean?
She just knew that she knew the intent back then, 40 years ago, that we were trying to keep the farmland open.
Right.
And hopefully keep the villages where the growth is.
Right. Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Somebody electronically that wanted to enter in this?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just Jeff, sorry, as somebody who's online last week, would you mind perhaps mentioning how people are to express themselves? Because I know I wasn't able to do it.
Well, I think what happened, I hadn't heard about until I got home after the meeting, and so I heard. I think either Mr. Curry had muted people, or I'm not sure what happened, because Mr. Curry's brilliant.
Well, I think.
So I thought I announced at the beginning, and I'll say again, for those of you who are listening by Zoom or by telephone, electronically, whichever way you're doing it, if you want to be recognized, maybe Mr. Curry can tell you. I honestly don't know what.
We talked about this ahead of time, and you wanted me to unmute, to mute all the lines, so that there wasn't chatter coming in. And we discussed the fact included in Board Docs. So people have to raise their hand if they want to be recognized.
Okay. How do they do? How do they raise their hands?
It is listed on Board Docs. So dial-in users can press star nine. iPad and iPhone and Android users can select more, which is the three dots, and then select raise hand. And PC Mac users can select participants, and then raise hand. And so the first person that I'm muted is MK.
Okay. You've got the floor, MK.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that there are complicated issues you feel that are raised by this meeting participation. I will say that I'm a little bit baffled by this whole discussion. It seemed to me that we all had agreed at one point that having votes participate in person and have the option of participating online was an appropriate option, and it worked well in the past, but it's worked well now. You clearly have a quorum. And so I'm a little bit baffled by the whole discussion, quite frankly. But I will also note that you amended your agenda tonight to include amendments to our planning mission procedures. Those amendments, of course, therefore, were not in place when this vote was taken. And I don't believe there's anything that allows you to ask questions about members of the public's medical condition. So I just would say I object to the vote that was taken last time. I think it's was wrong then. I think it's continuing wrong. And so I'd like to just place that objection.
Okay. Your objection is duly noted, for the record. Are there any further raised hands, Mr. Curry?
Yes. Patty Harvey.
Patty Harvey?
Patty.
Okay. Ms. Harvey, you've got the floor.
She needs to unmute. Ask her to unmute.
Can you hear me now? Oh, wait, no, I'm on the phone.
Sounds like your echo chamber.
Echo chamber, echo chamber. Is this the right phone number?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask that you keep in mind that the permanent record that's been made of this meeting needs to be clear to the citizens, residents, and anyone else who wants to look at it and hear it. The I don't know why the sound is kind of muffled. I don't know if you're not using mics, or if Luke is not close enough to you all. But please keep in mind that it's very difficult to hear you, and a lot of the conversation has been very muffled.
Okay. Thank you. We'll try to speak up. At least I will.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other ready stands, Mr. Curry?
Yes. Mr. Cole.
Mr. Cole, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. I would just like to say that I'm sorry that I cannot be here, because I do appreciate and want to put my time into this planning commission work. I do feel that an error was made at the last meeting when you moved to, it was moved to have me excluded from the meeting, and that motion failed a two-two vote. Then you moved, someone moved to have me included in the meeting, and that failed one-two-two vote. And as Chairman, as Chairman, you excluded me at that point. I would think that I should be included at that point, because I was present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kohler. I'll tell you what, I'm going to answer that real quickly. The. And I, are there any other, before I do that, Mr. Curry, any other? No, it's okay. Well, I'm going to declare then, if there's no other raised hands, I'm going to declare the public comment section closed. But I would like to take just a minute to explain the basis for my ruling last week, again, to Mr. Kohler, and especially even his party, and some of the other people who are interested in why it happened and how it happened. The Code of Virginia, specifically the Freedom of Information Act, makes it illegal to have any meetings of any public body unless certain conditions are made. All meetings have to be open to the public, and everyone that's on the public body has to be physically present. We can't take a vote, we can't do anything without a physical quorum, except as provided in this particular section, which is Virginia Code Section 2.23708.2. And that sets forth the circumstances under which the commission, or any other public, well, this commission can have electronic participation. The only one that's at issue now is when a member of a public body requests to participate electronically, and that could be for one of three reasons. The first two reasons are in subsection 2.23708.2-A1. And that is a disability that could be temporary or permanent that prevents the member from being physically present. Well, that's not an issue here, because no one claimed they were disabled or had a disability. The second possibility is they have a they have a medical condition that prevents them from attending the meeting. And that's what was acted upon. Now, subsection C of the same code, Section 2.23708.2, subsection C1 explains that in order to have that time, any of those types of participation, or even an emergency meeting like we had on May 20, when everybody participated electronically, the public body is required by law to adopt a written policy for and governing participation of its members by electronic communication means. And the statute says specifically, including an approval process for such participation. So pursuant to that, subsection C1, on May 20, we adopted a policy, the policy that was recommended by our FOIA officer, and I presume by reviewed, or also by the county attorney, because it's the same exact one the Board of Supervisors adopted the month or two before, well, actually, I think in January, I want to say. And all we did was change Board of Supervisors to planning commission. So we adopted that policy. Subsection D of the policy says, if there's a challenge, the commission has to vote on it. There was a challenge made by Mr. Henry. It was seconded by Mr. Fraser as to all three requests. And two of them were unanimous, and yours did not carry, as you correctly stated, Mr. Kohler. There was a motion to deny your request, and that did not pass on a two-to-two tie vote. And there was a motion to approve, which, by the way, I seconded and voted in favor of, but it also ended in a two-two tie. And I voted against excluding you. And that ended in a two-two tie. And since the statute says, instead of, I say process, an approval process, the result of the approval process was you didn't get approved. It ended in a tie vote. So absent approval, as the statute requires, and later on, in that same subsection, it says the policy shall be applied strictly and uniformly without exception, quote unquote. So your the motion to accept or approve your request did not get approved. And the way the statute's written, at least my reading of it, is that if it doesn't get approved, it's not approved.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't want to debate this now, Mr. Light.
Well, I'm sorry, but.
I'm just I'm just answering his question.
Well, I have a question about what you just said.
Okay, what?
Our policy, very narrow, and I am not a lawyer, you are. But it seems to me that as you read our policy, the the policy calls for consideration of the of the denial of the request. And so there's nothing in our policy that says we need to vote to approve the request. So I'm not sure why you made that second motion. When the first motion failed, Mr. Curry, Mr. Kohler shouldn't have been included in the meeting.
Okay. Well, I I don't believe it reached that. But I believe Mr. Conick, Chairman, read it properly, that if there is a challenge, then it has to be voted to be approved. So if there's a challenge, and you got to vote to approve, and the motion didn't.
The motion didn't pass.
Just a minute.
Didn't go through.
Just a minute. It says, it says in C1, the board member requesting to participate to, I'm reading from our Rules of Procedure, that we just adopted, and then re-adopted June 10. It says, the board member requesting to participate through electronic communication from a remote location must notify the chairman of the board owner before the day of the meeting. All right, that was good. Step two says, second sentence, if, I'm quoting, if a member's participation from a remote location is challenged. is challenged by a member of the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission shall vote whether to allow such participation." So, again, it stated in the affirmative whether to allow it. Well, first, there was a motion made not to allow it. Maybe that motion was improper. I talked to Mr. Henry about it. It was seconded, we voted on it. And then there was a motion by Mr. Shuland to allow it and that motion likewise failed. So it's six to one or half a dozen on the other. I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Light, but as you said, I'm the lawyer and you're not. So, I, I think I've answered your question. Now, now we've wasted another half an hour on this. I wanna get to what we're on about tonight, so... Unless you wanna go into this amendment now.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Henry.
Just to clarify, I have questions from the audience relating to the comprehensive plan. Uh, I, I believe last month, uh, we directed a, a map to be made of Sperryville. Uh, that Sperryville was gonna include only the R2 areas plus the village residential and village commercial. And the, uh, R5 was gonna be excluded as the same in Amisville and Clint Hill too. Uh, Mr. Taylor brought an interesting point in that Sperryville is different because there is R5 in Sperryville that, that has public sewer. So, uh, I know we're gonna have a public hearing and maybe that's one thing that can be addressed at a public hearing. That Sperryville's R5, a lot of it is different than the other places and that may be reason to possibly include the R5 in Sperryville and not the other places.
No, it was just the part that's served by the sewer.
Right.
Well, I think that's an interesting thing. I mean, we oughta talk about that more. The map in the back, is that right?
Correct. We don't want the back.
So if you wanna talk about it tonight, we can still do that. Alright. I, I really wanna move ahead and I think you're all aware of it. I just wanna note in the minutes and for those who are listening who are not privy to all our correspondence that in light of all these questions and all these issues that Mr. Light has expressed and Mr. Cole and Ms. Ishi have expressed, as Chairman of the Commission, I had already requested an informal advisory opinion from Mr. Bernhardt, the Executive Director of the Freedom of Information Act, uh, Freedom of Information Council in Advisory Council in Virginia. That's his job. And we discussed this after he, my inquiry and he responded and then we had a phone discussion. As I said last week, under the circumstances that we got, he said that is, and I'm quoting from his letter, "It's really up to the member and the public body to decide what does and does not qualify as a disability or medical condition that prevents attendance in any given instance." Quote-unquote. That's what he said. And after we discussed it on the phone, he again said, "It's a debatable issue. The commission's gotta decide it." And that's what our policy says. And that's exactly what we did. And I wanna say to, uh, everyone here and those who are listening, this doesn't have anything to do with politics. This doesn't have anything to do with personalities. This has to do with what the law says. And as you all know, it is no secret, I'm, uh, you know, like Mr. FOIA defender number one of Rappahanna County. And I know the statute pretty well. And, uh, I am not inclined to allow any kind of a violation on my watch in a commission that I'm chairman of or which I am chairman because that's part of my duties as chairman. It's not just to run the meetings and set the agenda and, and so forth and so on. It's to make sure this commission operates in accordance with law. And we are approaching, and we're gonna discuss them tonight, I guess, having a public hearing about the recommendation we have to make to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the comprehensive plan. Unlike special exception permits and special use permits where we make a recommendation to the plant, to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals, those are optional. The statute says the, the file or the application is to be referred to this commission for a recommendation, if any, that we wanna make. But that's different when you come to the comprehensive plan. The statute on comprehensive plan in Title 15.2 says the commission has to adopt a resolution recommending approval. It's not optional. The board goes to the Board of Supervisors. So we have to do that and we have to do it by a formal vote. And I'll tell you that after speaking with Mr. Bernhardt last week and telling him what my concerns were and after what happened at the meeting, I took it upon myself, as you all know, I think the Rappahannock News knows about it, I put all the questions of all the issues that bear on this in a letter that's dated June 22 to Mr. Bernhardt. And now I've asked him for a formal opinion. Uh, and it, and it sets out nine issues. But, uh, including what questions you can ask, whether HIPAA or ADA or any of these other federal statutes prohibit us from asking for any questions about uh, what, what the medical condition is, so forth and so on. And, uh, will be guided, I guess, by his opinion when it comes out. In addition to that, and I'll just add that he said that probably wouldn't be until August. Uh, in addition to that, I spoke to our state senator, who's also an attorney, Mark D. Ovechkin. Uh, I sent him a copy of my formal request for a FOIA opinion to Mr. Bernhardt and Mark Ovechkin looked at it and called me yesterday. And we discussed it. He agreed with every single thing that was done. He agreed with all the issues as I laid them out. Uh, and he said that getting, uh, because what I wanted to talk to him about was how we might go, might, and I wanted to go and discuss it tonight, how we might ask for Attorney General's opinion on this issue or on these issues and get some guidance there. And unfortunately, Senator Ovechkin said, "Well, David, that is not gonna cure your problem." Because the attorney, just like the opinions of the Fed, of Freedom of Information Act Council are not binding on a court, neither are opinions of the Attorney General. They're entitled to some weight, but they're not binding. And even if you went to that step and even, and, and personally, I don't care. I, I'd rather let everybody participate, personally. But I don't think it's within the parameters of the statute. I don't think we can do it legally. And regardless of whether I'm right or I'm wrong, later on, if we adopt a resolution recommending this comprehensive plan that Mr. Light and Mr. Henry and Mr. Frazier and a lot of other people have worked on so hard over so many years, we, we're gonna take that to a public hearing. And then, if, if somebody for whatever reason invokes this medical condition and regardless of how we vote on it, if we vote to allow it or we vote to disallow it, somebody down the line is liable to say on any matter that's in there, any kind of complaint is used as the basis for approving a special use permit or a special exception or denying it. They're liable to go to court and say that comprehensive plan wasn't validly adopted because they screwed up this part and, and that's point nine of the letter. I hope you all read it. There are not one but two Attorney General opinions. A Republican and a Democrat, I believe. Mr. McDowell, when he was Attorney General and Mr. Early, when he was Attorney General, both said the exact same thing. If you violate anything in FOIA during a meeting, everything you've done at the meeting, all the votes are void ab initio. They have no weight, they're like, they never happen. And so if we make a mistake and we do the wrong thing, then our comprehensive plan's gonna be subject to challenge. And it's not one year from now or two years. It, it never ends. It's void ab initio, like it never happened. They could bring it up in 10 years or 20 years. The same thing unless we re-adopt it. So, I, I mean, there are some solutions to it. Uh, and what I propose, when we get to that part of the agenda of whether we're gonna put it for a public hearing, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Light's here, I appreciate it. I know how you feel and I respect your views, I really do. But, uh, and I respect the views of Ms. Ishi and Mr. Cole. Uh, I'm, I'm doing what I, well, I'm, I voted the way I voted and I've done what I've done because I think there's a really serious legal issue here that we have to get right or all this could be for absolutely nothing. And I'm not, I don't want that on me. I can tell you that. I don't want it on me, I don't want it on you, I don't want it on the commission. Uh, so I don't wanna put all this work into it and then have it declared invalid. And so, uh, the best thing that I can think of, and Mr. Cole and Ms. Ishi, you can think about it between now and when the meeting happens, if we go forward to a public hearing, I'm gonna ask you, just as a colleague, to please consider changing your request for that one meeting at the pub, of the public hearing. If you still feel the way that you do it, you feel that it's unsafe and so forth, to, to change it to personal matter because there's no limitation on what the personal matter can be. And, and as Mr. Shuland asked at the last meeting, if you say it's a personal matter, it doesn't matter if it's a birthday party or an anniversary or a wedding or a bar mitzvah or you don't feel safe to come to the meeting. If you say that's a personal matter, it's gonna get approved and you can, and then you can participate electronically. And then guess what? We have no issue. This all goes away. This is only happening because of, uh, you're asserting that not having a condition but being concerned you have a condition, you might get a condition, is equivalent of a condition. And I again remind you, because I know you're not lawyers, the Freedom of Information Act says all these exemptions and exceptions have to be narrowly construed, not broadly construed or not creatively construed. And when it says, the member says they had due to a medical condition, they can't come. If you don't have something, you, you can come. If you don't wanna come, I appreciate it. But those are two different things. And so you, and it doesn't matter if I'm right or wrong. I might be a hundred percent wrong, but I might be right. And guess what? No matter which way we do it, somebody could challenge it since you shouldn't, whatever you did, you should've done the other thing. And will, and then it'll wind up in court. So that's the significance of it. So with that all said, that's enough. Until we get to this proposed change, if you wanna talk about it later. Let's talk about the comprehensive plan. So, do, do we wanna revisit this? Include, I mean, because Michelle can still tell, uh, Mr. Ronnie and put that together with Alex Sharp's map and change and put RR5, as Mr. Taylor suggested, in, into the village zone, uh, in the complaint act. The part, only the part of RR5 that is zone, that is, uh, on the sewer system or adjacent to the sewer system. Does anybody wanna talk about that? No?
Need a motion to do that?
Well, if you wanna just make a motion, sure.
Well, I'll make a motion.
To do what I just said?
To add, uh, Sperryville or, like, to the discussion. Include the map.
Okay.
The service by the sewer.
Service by the sewer.
Service by the sewer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion. I, I think it's really inappropriate to have this conversation when the representative of that district is not present tonight. So with all due respect, I think we discussed this issue extensively in multiple meetings to reach the conclusion. And to do so night, tonight, reach a different conclusion, I think further exacerbates the problem that we had.
Okay.
I think we're reaching a different conclusion because Mr. Taylor brought some perspective, a different perspective to it.
He reminded us that his wife worked on it 40 years ago when she was eight years old.
No, she wasn't.
She wasn't eight.
No, because that would make her 48.
Well, that's, that's, which pointed out, uh, it's a different perspective, I mean, that we didn't address the, during our discussions, it wasn't brought to our attention and we didn't think of it, of the R5s that are on the, are subject to the sewer.
That, that should be served by the sewer system. We didn't, that wasn't included in the discussion.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
And that was the discussion that we had to have electronically. And it's, and Mr. Sharp was on the phone and explained it all to us, but that's, that's one of the problems of not having an in-person meeting. I mean, I, I'm, I sort of followed what he said, but I'm sure to a lot of people, uh, maybe the public and who are listening in, it went zooming right over their head. No pun intended. It was a good one. Yes, Mr. Light?
I think the, we did discuss the consideration of the, the map. I remember we asked for the map. We had imagined that there was gonna be a map of the coverage as a means of defining that area that was included. And I believe what we got was kind of a schematic that didn't really map too well to the particular properties. So even if we, um, agree to, to revisit this, it's not clear what we're talking about when you have parcels that are, that are larger than village-sized parcels that you, insofar that the conversation it's been either on or adjacent to. So now you could be, you know, too, you know, adjacent to, could give you roughly 10 acres away from that coverage. So what, I, I guess I'm not sure what we're moving to discuss, but, you know, I, I might be comfortable having somebody explain to me what exactly that is, but especially without the submission, without the commissioner from that district, I wouldn't be comfortable going further.
Alright. Can we get that up there? I see it's in the Sperryville map. So, it's gonna be changed in that the, that, that map only shows R2, right? Correct?
This map shows...
It's R2 in front of it.
R2, village commercial.
It does show the commercial.
Village, commercial, and village residential.
Yeah, right. And, but I mean, the bigger, the R, if, if, if it doesn't show R5, is that right?
Correct.
Or highway commercial.
Right, if it doesn't show the highway commercial, we agreed to add the highway commercial back in at the last meeting, right?
Right.
Okay. Uh, Tom, if you would, could you get up and maybe go over to that one and sort of give us an idea of exactly where you're talking about?
It's, uh, Mr. Taylor, might be easier.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You have a thing up that we know, is that?
I'm just gonna be six feet away. Um, I apologize, I gotta get my bearings here.
Look at this.
Yeah, it's right here.
Look where it's at.
It's all this right here. That right there. It's about 35 and a half acres, but only about 25 acres that's actually usable.
So it's on the south side of Woodrow?
Yes.
It's, oh, all of them?
Yeah, this is Woodrow right here. Comes up, just follows this line. Woodrow comes all the way here.
Oh, that's Woodrow.
And then exit, uh, the entrance off of 211 is right here. And then the, uh, actually, the, me and I improved this road. Uh, it was too narrow and it had trouble moving snow for people. And so they came to me, uh, it feels like 15 or 20 years ago and said, hey, take, take some land off of it and improve it. And I said, sure. So I gave them about acre of land and then they improved and tarred and chipped this road thinking it maybe it's, would be the possible future of this property would be a good place to, to have buildings.
It's gonna travel back into the sewer system if it's extended.
So, yes, because the sewer system, the sewer system, the forest...
Is this, wait a minute, is this, this is Woodrow right here?
Yes, that's Woodrow.
Okay, and it comes out, and it comes out there?
Right here at the old mill.
Right.
He does his old mill, so...
And the peak, that's not long.
So, uh, we have access, sewer access on 211. And we also have a couple of points here that, uh, at least one that I've fired was to, to be able to tap into the sewer. And also I've had some verbals that said, hey, like Tommy Atkins, he has sewer lots here. That's R1.
That's where county's is?
That's where Tommy is, Tommy's right here.
He spoke to me about that sometime back.
Yeah, he's got three one-acre lots and he, he offered, you know, if I wanted to hook on there, he didn't have an issue with it. So, uh, so that's where the issue is.
Yeah.
So before you, before you...
Wait, wait, hold on, you want to...
Just, sorry, sir, you, you, sorry, excuse me. You mentioned that there might be some other R5 property on the other side that's, that's similarly situated or...
Well, this, it's, uh, here's the schoolhouse nine. So that's, that's R5 zones, two... So that's, that's RR5 zones, two commercial. And then all, this right here, this field right here, my understanding is, is also RR5. And that joins the sewer plant right here, and of course, uh, I'm sure that the old schoolhouse, which is now Headmaster's Pub and all that, is already on the sewer system.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify whether we were talking about just that piece or all of the RR5 and understand what?
Well, my understanding is, if I, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Miller has put majority of his property into the easement.
Right.
And he left this out, and the schoolhouse nine, uh, because it's a golf course, may or may not. But, that, because that's where we, we all thought that this would be part of the village. And that would be where the development would happen. It may be fifty years down the road, or maybe ten years, but right now, there's, is kind of a rental crusher. It's hard to find rentals that are pri, reasonably priced today. So we just thought that maybe, and it's hard for me to put a real house on five acres, to justify it, but. Thank you for that.
So, we're only talking about the part where the, where the purple stops on up between 211 and Woodrow, on out to the mill. That that, that would be included in, that only that area of RR5 would be included.
Well, I think that includes all RR5 that's served by the, it was served.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So.
That would make sense.
Miller's two, and the line there.
Yeah.
And the post office.
It'd be nice to see what that map looked like.
Yeah, I feel like we're.
All right, well let's, all right, well let's, I'll tell you what, all right, well, we've got a motion in a second. How about if you amend your motion that, that we get two on our new maps, and then we already ordered up, and then we'll doctor it up with this as well. With this, this RR5 that's served by that, and I'll work with Michelle and Alex, and we're gonna have a meeting sometime.
I think, I think.
And then we'll present.
Well, I, I think, um, it's very appropriate that it has sewer on it, it should, it should have the, uh, have that consideration.
Village designation.
Yeah, it should be part of, it's very good. We use that word village pretty loosely, I would rather say it should be part of Spurville. Um, you say village, and everybody thinks, oh, village is, is village commercial, or village residential. But Spurville is bigger than just Main Street. So, um, uh, I think that if those areas with the sewer are on the, and a important part of the planning process, some of Spurville, they should, should be included, as far as Spurville.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I've just had, we had this discussion, we had votes, Mr. Henry's position was wrote it down. Think this is a play, take advantage of a different configuration tonight. I'm fine with having another look at the maps, but I have absolute objection to taking this on without the representative of this district present.
Well, she had the opportunity twice to be here, she chose not to be here, so that's her prerogative, to not to be here and participate. We're here participating, I participate in life and business every day.
Yeah, so.
So, you know, uh, so I'm out here, not wearing the face mask, and I feel pretty, pretty safe in this room. And, uh, you know, I'm looking at this from the standpoint of planning, not a political objective, or anything like that. It's proper planning to include properties that have sewer on them into the community future planning considerations. Simple as that.
Actually, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The fellow, Mr. Henry's saying, I don't think that we're trying to change anything, we're just trying to, to bring it back around to where it's always been.
And it's true, without resenting, we're just saying that that's part of the village.
At the last, at that meeting, when the vote was taken, Mr. Henry and I were in the minority. But I think that we have this key piece of information that we had just kind of overlooked. Actually, even though a lot of us were here in that time period, we weren't actually on the planning commission working on it. But we had, um, the information that Mr. Taylor brought forward.
Hey, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, just that I agree with that, and I find with putting a map together to take a look, I just think we should revisit this with respect to the consensus that goes forward at the meeting, which I guess will be a separate vote sometime anyway.
Right. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
I vote aye. All right, the ayes have it, four to one. All right, the next thing on our agenda, or at least in the Complan, believe it or not, I think we're almost, almost there, is this Appendix A Commercial Area Plan. And it's not so much the commercial area plan that's an issue. Uh, I don't wanna steal Ms. Barski's thunder, uh, but maybe I will, just because then she won't have to get up and talk. Look where those two question marks are there. Who put them on that? Uh, the, the commercial zone goes way up, what's the name of your mountain, I can never remember?
Little Jenkins?
Jenkins, Little Jenkins. Well, back behind Midstate Motor and the Farmers Co-op, in what's clearly a sort of resource preservation area, somehow, some way, that commercial line got drawn from, uh, a point in Route 211. Uh, it looks like almost down to, uh, to where Rock Mill's Road comes out. Maybe, maybe it's past it. But anyway, then it goes all the way up the mountain on the, on the north side of 211, way up that mountain, and then cuts over and then comes back down. And so, I, I don't know how that line got drawn, but that whole area on what's pretty much the top of the map, that's the questionable part that we need to talk about. So, uh, Mr. Light?
I, I just, I know, it's been a while since we talked about this, but I think another factor here is that there's a textual description of this area that might not be precisely consistent with what's on the map uh, in Chapter Seven.
Chapter Seven?
Chapter Seven, it's related to the, it's related to the future oil industry. I don't have that, I figured it's, but as I recall, there's both the map version of this and a narrative.
And it, and it mentions the Appendix A there in Chapter Seven. All right, let's see. I'm looking at the. Well, this may be an older version now.
If you wanna move on, I can see if I can.
I want to, here it is, it's, it's, it's a new language that's been put in, in, under economic development, on what appears to be page ninety-one of the plan itself, not of the document. Economic development, uh, it says, uh, only one area in the county, uh, lead highway between the old tollhouse and the intersection of Route 622, Rock Mill's Road, has experienced a mixture of commercial, public facility, and residential development. This area, and here's some change that was made in, in this version, or that was added. This area has been specifically designated for development of the commercial area plan Appendix A, as well as through designation of a commercial area overlay district in Rappahanna County zoning ordinance. And then there's a section number. The area should be used as a focal point for future economic and public facility activities.
So my point is simply, I think with respect to the roads and the markers on the roads, the description is probably clearer than the, the.
Well, yeah, that, that part of it's accurate, the problem is that it goes way back up into this area, up the mountain. And I personally, I mean, I don't think that that area, it's very steep, and some of that's probably in conservation. I would say about half of what I see on this map, from what I know of it, is in conservation, not even agriculture. So, uh, I mean, I think what we need to do is kind of change the map.
Right, I, because of all the, uh, legal things that have been going on with that area. I've been up there a number of times here the last two or three years, and it is, it's too steep.
Right, I mean, I know what you would put up there, anyway. So I would, I, I mean, where the yellow line, I think, is the existing, what, zone commercial. That goes right behind the Far, uh, Farmers Co-op. And behind, right behind Midstate Electric Motor, and then it comes back out to 211. Uh, right, sort of where the Dr. McHugh or Dr. Miller's office is. Uh, I don't have a problem with extending up the orange line where that comes back to the road. In other words, extend the yellow line.
I'm seeing the yellow line here, is that all that?
No, the yellow line is something, uh, this, Mr. Chairman, the yellow line is the one I could add.
Ah, that's your map, I see, okay, thank you. Great. Has everybody got this, now? Oh, so you put the question marks on it, good.
Yes.
You think they were on the bottom? All right. So.
Thank you. So, can we just clarify, by whatever you care to, that our understanding of the yellow line is that?
The yellow is the one, that's right?
Right, that's general commercial.
Right, the yellow, the yellow line is the actual, what's zone, commercial zone. So this orange, so the, what, what we're, what's in the Complan is the orange line. And I would say, or propose that it, that it, that it, I mean, instead of this little, I'll walk up there and do it. Right up there behind the co-op. Just have it come, come straight out here, pick up to this line, and then come back down. Right along, right, just straighten out that line, there's sort of a box on the left-hand side, in yellow, that goes behind, uh, the physical therapy place.
Well.
That's all zone commercial. In other words, straighten that box out, and just have a straight line, instead of that box going in, have it go straight on out to.
So, I've got a comment on that.
Okay.
Okay, problem with that is that, uh, Dr. McHugh's office there is pretty close to the orange line. Right above the motors.
Right, right.
Okay, and several years ago, I think he was originally approved, it was like a five-year permit. Uh, and the permit expired, he, I mean, renewed, and he had to come in, and there was some neighbors fighting against him. And, uh, he got approved indefinitely, this last time. Uh, but he's not zoned, uh, commercial, and, uh, uh, I think in the future, that is a medical goal, there's a very few medical facilities in this town.
I, I do remember one problem there. That his driveway crosses, if he's it's zoned, either ag or something else, and that's what stopped us from rezoning it last time.
Right.
He served, he served on the right of way instead of, of East Central.
Well.
So we'd have to pick that other property up if we did that.
Yeah, but I'm just, when I, when I rezoned it, we're just saying it's in the plan.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
I'm just saying we're in the plan. And I, I, and that field next to him there, uh, that goes with Kid Porter's old place, that is substantially open, and the terrain on that is, uh, not like the others.
The, what, oh, terrain?
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, what I think would be a more appropriate line, just as, as a compromise, is you, you start a line that lines up with that row of trees on the left side, that row of green trees.
Is that what that is?
It has to be.
Okay.
And then take it over and, um, it would touch the tip of the white area that says, Midstate.
Oh, yeah, Midstate.
And, and continue a straight line over.
Right.
It would be something like.
Okay.
This, and so I think that addresses maybe some future concerns of people and, and, um, it would be more appropriate there, if those people need to do some expansion at the bottom. It would be more reasonable and for protection for the people up on the mountain, more than, or in the preservation areas.
Okay.
Now, um, second question is that.
All right, well, let's, let's see if we got everybody on board with that.
I don't.
Take here.
That's all I did.
That's right there.
So it's gonna go right here, and then back.
Okay, and otherwise.
Otherwise leave orange.
As it was. I'm not sure what, you know what's going on here, though.
Well, this, this other question mark, let's get to the south side. Are we everybody put on the north side?
Well, I'm at least clear on what it is, which I think is.
All right. On the south side, there's this big chunk that's got the question mark in it. Uh, and, uh, that, that is, uh, I can't remember, I know Champ Carney used to have this logging business there. I can't, I can't remember who owns that, I think it's a bunch of heirs or somebody, like, that is zoned, that is currently zoned commercial. Behind the, like, the bus.
Zone commercial or in the map?
Not zone commercial.
What?
So we're, we're talking about potential downzoning?
No, I, I'm saying that, look, the red line doesn't, does not include it. And I'm saying the red line should go and follow.
The yellow line.
The yellow line, follow the yellow brick road, as they say.
Right, but that probably, you're saying it's not just the map, it's not, I'm just saying that part of these are actually zoned commercials?
I believe that it is, yep. And, uh, it's almost, that whole lot there is zoned commercial. Because I can remember there were some issues when he was doing his logging business, and it's zoned commercial. So, the, the future obviously ought to include the present, seems like to me. So that would be my suggestion there, to have that orange line make a left where the, the yellow line intersects it, and then follow the yellow line on out.
I think the yellow line should come over and intersect at 622.
All the way?
I have that corner. And since that's what you read, that's what the existing ordinance.
Yeah, that's the other point, I think this area is in some question, because according to the textual description, I think you, this would be included.
You mean below the, the red line?
Below the red line.
You go over 622, I think you should just take that yellow line and follow it.
All the way up and then come up Rock Mill's Road?
Yep.
Across on the layup?
Yep.
Well, great, and I'm going the back way to the Walmart parking lot. Someday. All right, so, I'm all right with that. It's, it's not, you know, it's just a definite, maybe that's gonna be the proposed commercial zone, future. It doesn't mean it's gonna be, it just means it could be. Everybody okay with those changes? Let's take a little, just a consensus sort of vote, that, I'm talking about both of them now. To do what Mr. Henry suggested on the north side, and what I sort of suggested as amended by Mr. Henry on the south. Mr. Fraser, are you good with that?
Can you all repeat that?
No. You serious? What?
No. Yeah, I'm up at 622. I just, I, I didn't get my height, I can't see that in my, my mind, I don't know how.
Right, the tree makes it logical.
But this is the, that field, or is that, that shed, or running barn?
It's sort of like a pavilion used to be.
That's not too bad.
No.
Okay, I, I can agree with that.
Okay, Mr. Shuland, you good with it?
I'm good with it.
Mr. Henry?
I'm good with it.
Mr. Light?
Yep.
Okay, you too, good, that's unanimous, five to nothing. Great. Uh, all right, as, as regards Chapter Eight, uh, we actually did that on March 11th, and Mr. Light missed that meeting, I think he was traveling. And he had put in some extensive comments, so he and I had some correspondence in preparation for last week's meeting. And it turned out, Ms. Ishi had most of the same comments, and so, most of what he was commenting on got struck and left out, so he's on board now with the.
Can I make a quick clarification short? I still think there's an issue, because now there are three versions of Chapter Eight on Board Docs, so I.
I don't know why.
Well, I still think there's some question.
The one I sent you, there's, that's it.
I know, but, I'm not, I have not taken the time to figure out which one that is, but if you look at what's in Board Docs, there's three versions of Chapter Eight.
There should be.
Looks like one of them's on here twice.
But well, the one that you sent me is not, was not the same as either of the ones that were on Board Docs the last time we checked the meeting. So I do think I've got some version issues.
I don't know, I sent, I, I sent, but I had my March 11 notes, and there were a few little word changes, and I made those, and I sent it to Mr. Curry.
So it's, so to be clear, the, the thing that was in the version that, or one of the changes that was reflected in the version you sent me, that was not on either of the ones in Board Docs, was the, the renewal of the comments about revisiting land use taxation.
Yep, that, no.
And, and, uh, something about easements being a hundred acres or more.
That's how.
But those were in both of the versions that were still on Board Docs, so let's just get that straight. That, those are the things to look for for the most recent version.
All right, well, those are not in there, those two things were taken out.
Good.
Right. So, uh, that stuff is all there, uh, subject to this map. Now, do, does anybody wanna, do we have to change anything that's in Appendix A? That stuff is all there, subject to this map. Now, does anybody wanna, do we have to change anything that's in Appendix A? I mean, the text, or is that okay, as it stands? I mean, all this, it's only the first two pages, this LCA thing. I, I'm not even sure what that's all about, but that's not what I'm, that's not relevant to the map.
Yeah, I, I would just say that having been through this discussion a bunch of other times, one of the things that, this has always been a confusing matter, and I think we've addressed it somewhat by calling it the commercial area instead of the commercial zone, the word zone was used three multiple times in the old version, so I think there may still be some puzzlement over this, but I think it's improved, and so.
Okay.
I still think we may have some words missing.
So, so subject, so we have no text changes there, so it's only the map that we just agreed on, and we're waiting on the Strayville map. So Mr. Curry, I had sent you all the, everything that's been amended or updated or whatever since January, when I took over as chairman. So you're gonna input that somehow, and can you give us?
Yes, I've already seen sections that look like it aren't, that are modifying old versions. And one in particular was a section that was referring back to defining density, which was defined in the December version.
Right.
And then edit that made to an earlier version.
That's, that's my fault in the, so they're just ignoring the comment about it, it shouldn't be in there, but.
It was about defining, that was defined. The changes that you gave to like an August version.
Right.
Yet I need to update the December version.
Right. Well, I'll get with you, and let's go over that, was it?
I do want to say one thing about the commercial area, you realize that when you reduce the area, you are performing a downzoning because your, your overlay district refers to the map in the comp plan. And so when you change that line, it is a zoning change. Just wanna make sure you're familiar, aware of it.
That's what I thought, but I didn't.
They are late, and the ordinance refers to that map in that plan.
But we don't, I'm not sure how this map was generated.
Well, there was a study back in the 90s, I think, that was the original genesis, but I, y'all will be more surprised at that.
So do we have to put that in the advertisement, that we're also doing that? That, that's not gonna be in the overlay district?
Yeah, sorted out.
What?
They're late, is all I know, it needs to be sorted out.
Well, you may have to say, the changes made in the, in the commercial district, commercial area.
Right.
I think, you know.
Okay, and corresponding changes in the commercial district. Okay, alright, when, subject to you and I going over whatever questions you have, how, I mean, can, can we get something that's gonna be on file for people to look at, subject to getting these two maps on? I mean, this map we can do pretty easy, can we?
If it's all straightforward, it's just a matter of input, that's easy, but once things don't start aligning, then that's when the questions come up, and what is the latest version, what is the version that the planning commission wanted to see, and it may take.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna, we're, hopefully, what I laid out when we had our first, when we started up again, May 20, we're gonna do this, and everybody's gonna get a look at, at another version of, like, an updated version, a December version, everybody's gonna have a chance to look through it, and then we're gonna go through it and say, okay, chapter one, and everybody thought good with it?
Simply state it, I think, Mr. Conick, you and Mr. Curry need to get together and mesh this thing, and we're gonna have a July version.
Or a Jim version.
A July version, and get about all the other versions.
I can definitely commit to get all the data input by July 15.
Alright, well, let's go ahead and talk about having a public, oh.
Mr. Chairman, you got two different questions, I just wanted to.
Alright, whose bars come?
Uh, you, you already took care of most of my part, but this is a map that has been very confusing, because it's this commercial area. If it's an overlay district, could you add that word, overlay, somewhere?
I think that's.
Well, that's in the zoning ordinance, I think, right?
Just because it's.
We want to refer to it in the plan too, I believe.
Well, there's a crosswalk, the December version of these had a crosswalk bringing leading readers to understand that there's a relationship between Appendix A and the zoning ordinance with the zoning ordinance section that has the overlay, and it talked about both, so to remedy some of this confusion. I don't know if that's in the latest version, but it was in the December version.
But just because a map doesn't say that, a lot of people who don't read those documents tend to say, here's a commercial area, we're right next to it, why don't, why can't we change the zoning, you know, that kind of.
You don't have to change the zoning, if you're inside that orange line, it's commercial, you can be commercial by all.
Next to it. Sometimes they bring up those, that kind of things. I mean, this is overlay.
It wouldn't be supported by the comp plan.
So, so to be clear, I think the issue is that there is a subset of the commercial overlay district that allows you some greater flexibility by rights, it's a few conditions associated, not mainly by right, but has some sort of programmatic steps to get into zones that don't apply outside that district, and that is part of the, the confusing elements here.
Well, the overlay is, the overlay is a major, you might.
But there are rules, it's described.
Start with a set of rules. There's, there's three overlay districts. You guys should know this, Article 5, overlay district starts at Section 170-43, enumeration of overlay districts. Floodplain district, general commercial overlay, with the one we're talking about, and stream protection overlay. So the, the, uh, stream protection one is, goes on and on and on, and the commercial overlay district starts at Section 170-45.1 of the ordinance. And it's, uh, district boundaries, this, I think is what, exactly what Mr. Curry is talking about, subsection B of Section 170-45.1 says district boundaries, that general commercial overlay district boundaries are delineated in accordance with a map adopted by the Rapid County Board of Supervisors and made a part of the Rapid County Comprehensive Plan. No wonder they're that, anyway.
That's what it is.
So if we change the comprehensive plan and they adopt it, it's automatically gonna change that, right?
Right, so it'd be a downplaying if you should.
Well, okay, so.
There might be some people who want to talk to you about that.
Maybe.
There could be one, yeah.
Alright, well, we'll work that out, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One more, I.
Oh, right.
Yes, well, I was wondering, um, I'm looking at the map, and I was wondering, does the, the orange and yellow line, does it go all the way out to like, uh, Get Brown Hollow?
No.
Is that six?
Oh, no, no, it stops right here at the cross from Rock Mills Road.
Stops right at Rock Mills Road, because my, my.
Goes up there and then makes, goes back behind the co-op.
Okay, 'cause I was.
Goes up Clark Lane a little ways, and then.
'Cause I know that my property was zoned agriculture and also, uh, commercial. And I'm out there beside John Walker Jenkins across the river, he was also zoned.
He never was that far.
No, that's not, that's not this, there may be some other little commercial piece, but it's not this.
So this is something totally different, so if that's, so I know that that was zoned commercial and agriculture, and also John Walker Jenkins' shed that he had up on the hill there, Twin Oaks or whatever it was called.
It's John Walker, it's a new John Walker right here.
John Walker?
That's my shed, yeah. That's your one.
So, um, that's a Get Brown Hollow, and I know that you have the, the, um, old pineapple, that's a business that's right in there too.
That's not part of this either.
Okay, so.
I mean, that's not part of this overlay thing we're talking about.
Okay, so.
Whatever zone that you officially have, you officially have, this is not what we're talking about.
Okay, so.
We're talking about peanut butter and bologna, you know, so, you know, whatever zone that you have in the maps, you still have. We're talking about future zoning backwards to co-op, so it's two different things, and that cuts off at,
I thought you.
On your side of the road, it cuts off at Rock Mills.
Okay, I thought you were doing the youth.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Okay, uh, and I just want to clarify, I'm talking about peanut butter, and everyone else here talking about bologna, I don't know who that is, but.
That's a combination.
Right, so.
The two don't go together.
Oh, right. So that brings us to the live advertising public hearing.
You, Mr. Curry, have to get together, get a final draft, everything corrected, bring it back to us in July. And then we can decide to advertise in the public.
Maybe by then we'll have some clarification, or maybe this whole silly plandemic will all be over. And everybody will be healthy, and we can have our meetings, uh, another thing is we're gonna have the public hearings, but at least it's proposed to have it at the high school auditorium, what?
Elementary school.
Elementary.
Elementary.
Oh, we have two schools now? Okay, yeah, elementary school, that's what I meant, whatever, that's what we're gonna have, and so we'll have a lot more space for everybody to spread out and do whatever they feel they have to do.
Regarding that matter, is this body wanting to have a discussion about where July 15th meeting will take place?
Well, if we're not gonna have a public hearing, that's gonna happen here.
You may find it more likely to get a quorum, full membership of your body if you could spread out. The board of supervisors will be meeting in the elementary school, and the school has made, the school board has made that building available for public meetings.
I see.
I, I wouldn't doubt that it was more of a challenge even tonight, with my being here to have, spreading out, I'm not sure, probably what we do tomorrow is.
Well, uh, I'm, the first, alright, we're just gonna have to put out, you know, a FOIA, basically change the place, because the, the schedule that we adopted, I'm perfectly alright with that, and maybe that'll cure our problem.
That was it. Off screen. What happens, can you shoot it on?
Let's go ahead and read that, man.
Alright, that sounds like a motion, is there a second?
Yeah. Second, yeah.
Alright, um, now.
All papers say aye.
Oh, right, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, unanimous, five to zero, now, uh, what about a work session before the regular July meeting, if we get it done, but you wanna have that or?
No, we got a 4th of July coming up, and, you know.
Okay.
You and Mr. Curry got a lot of work to do to put this, this final version together, so you don't need to spend a lot of quality time working with this.
Thank you very much for that.
I would certainly like to see June 17th come to an end.
June 17th?
Yep, we're still on the June 17th meeting for.
Alright, uh.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
No, I'm not ready to adjourn yet, we've got two more things on there. One is the May amendments. I would like to spend some time, or at least pretty good to spend some time. Uh, and Mr. Shulon, for you, it may not be revisiting the May amendments, it may be your first visit, so, uh, I, I just wanna, once again, from this side of the table, express my like shock and amazement that our former zoning administrator called me one morning and said, David, if you wanna put that list of amendments together, I, I need it by 12 o'clock. So I put it on the agenda for Wednesday's comp planning commission meeting, and that was at about 9:30 or quarter of 10, and I got it to her by 12 o'clock. I did that whole list in two and a half hours, and that was in something like, uh, uh, not May, but March of 2016. So here, four years and three months later, we're finally back to it, the, the planning commission, when it was still being under the chairman's hip of Mr. Settle, and then Mr. Light finally slug their way, or slog their way through all that list, when they found time to do it, and between, between all their other business, and then unfortunately, it, it sort of got paid. So I would like to get us focused at least, like, read it again, uh, there are a couple of other things that have come up, that I guess I would like to add to that list, I mean, there are kind of nits and that's, I think I had told somebody, I don't remember, I don't know, I wrote a letter and said, for example, in one discussion, I think somebody asked me about the nursing home, or the convalescent home, or something like that, one of those, um, definitional type sections says if it's, I think, uh, 12 of 20 beds or less, it's, it's an S U P, and if it's more than 20 beds, it's, oh, don't say 20 or less, it says less than 20 and more than 20, but it doesn't say what if it's 20. So that has to be cleaned up, and there's something about schools that's the same way, if there's a certain number of students, it says in one part, less than, and the other part, greater than, but it doesn't say if there's exactly that many. So little things like that, that have come to my attention, uh, and maybe you all have some, I mean, what I would like to do is at least get that list. A lot of that stuff is just, as you will recall, commissioners that were on there at the time, is that most of that stuff is like VDOT, it's still called VDHNT, it's a bunch of that stuff, there's a bunch of references to the Code of Virginia, that they have the wrong section numbers now. Uh, there's, there's a bunch of tourist homes.
Would you like to talk about this?
I, I would like to do it at our next available meeting, and if we're not gonna have, um, I mean, I don't.
So Mr. Conick, why don't you?
July.
Okay, I was gonna suggest that we have a work session between July and August meeting, and then really talk about it hard at the August meeting.
Alright, that sounds reasonable.
Because we gotta, I really like to see this comp plan get to the finish line here.
Okay, I would do. Everybody on board with that, everybody good with that, but I would like you to all, you know, it's been a while, I'm sure for everybody, it's been a while since I actually looked at it.
Could you comment on even what's on board docs now, there's, there's one that's referred to as the June version, and then there's the other one, they're, they're slightly different. Uh, I, I don't, I haven't compared them so closely, but again, we have an accumulation of evidence here. Looks like this is the one that you might have commented on, maybe?
That was made.
Oh, okay.
When the planning commission went through this, and as the entire commission at a work session agreed and voted upon what changes they were ready to move ahead with.
Okay.
Um, and they're highlighted in the, in the green.
Okay, can you circulate that to everybody after the meeting tonight, so everybody's got the one, the copy they're supposed to be working on?
Well, and what's the other one then?
That is just an older version.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I think one thing, maybe in general, I'm not sure, I think we should, I know we always have the access to the old records, but it seems to me that at each meeting, only those things that are not made up, so we should be in the next meeting session.
I agree, but, okay, that would be great. We'll try to do that now, do you, this, uh, I brought it up, I put on the agenda, and we agreed to it. Do you wanna discuss these amendments, or let that go to another meeting? I think we, the only reason I'm doing it tonight is because, as Mr. Light just pointed out, when we have our July meeting, we're gonna have the same issue come up again. And what I have done here, I'll just tell you, uh, what this thing that's entitled Second Amendment to rules of procedure, I put in exactly what. I don't know if it's on board, I doubt it's on board. All I did was add in to our Section 3.4, the 3-4. Basically, some of there's editorial things in Section D1 and 2. The main changes, the substantive changes are in D2, and D1, I'm sorry, D1 and 2. Uh, the rest are sort of editorial changes.
You mean the under, the underlined?
So the part that's, the part that's underlined and bold is the new stuff. I, it looks like in Section 1, part of the bold part did not get, uh, underlined. So in the second, just to go through it real quickly, D1 is gonna be amended by saying the board member, and, and by the way, that should be commission member, or just the member, sorry. The member requesting to participate through electronic communication uh, from a remote location must notify the chairman of the board, it should be just the chairman, uh, in writing or via electronic mail, because mostly all the requests I got were by electronic mail, and it didn't really specify, so that'll clear that up. Honor before the date of meeting and so forth and so on, and added a sentence, such request shall state the basis for electronic participation in accordance with the code section A1A or A1B. And then the request shall state with reasonable specificity the basis for the request on the grounds that a member has a disability or a medical condition that prevents the member, members physically attending the meeting, or the specific nature of the personal matter. All that's right out of the code, pretty much, uh, everybody has pretty much stated, or complied with it, uh, up till now. And, uh, And, uh, so that's the changes to Section D1 about how to, how to notify. Section D2, I have to say that I just kind of took this last time, and we didn't have any. The issues weren't apparent to me at that time, but, you know, the procedure for approving or not approving is, is pretty vague, and the standard is pretty vague, it just, it just, if you, if you read it without the, uh, it just says it shall be approved, but it doesn't say how, it doesn't say if the commission approves it, does the chairman approve it? It doesn't, didn't say anything about that, so, uh, I've changed it to insert the word, it shall be approved unless such participation is challenged or would violate this policy, and I have changed for any provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. If any member's request for electronic participation from a remote location is challenged by a member of the planning commission, then the planning commission shall vote whether, and this is what I answered, to approve the request and allow participation, because the statute says approval process. And then I added these, the next, this next long sentence, in considering a request for electronic participation under Code 2.23708, 21A1, uh, which is either or, the commission may require the member to corroborate the medical or other basis of the member's request, and to verify that the disability or medical condition prohibits the member's physical attendance, provided however that any such request for additional information is not prohibited by applicable provisions of the Health Insurance Portability Accountability Act, HIPAA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, or any or other applicable law. So that's the new part. And then in the last part, uh, it's all, uh, it's all, it's all pretty much editorial, except that one, uh, thing, that in emergency, it, about who gets to say whether or not, uh, it's, um, ma- makes it impracticable or unsafe. So I changed it to say during, if the governor, the governor's declared a state of emergency, and during the term of such state of emergency, in the opinion of the chairman, or if otherwise provided in any local declaration of emergency or emergency ordinance enacted by a governing body, which is just what we did, what we had here, the governing body enacted, uh, provision that said we could not meet in person until Phase 2, and so that would accommodate that, and in the absence of guidance from the governing body, it's up to the chairman, which is actually what their original ordinance said. So those are the changes, do you want to vote on them tonight, or do you want to table it, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Leif. Frankly, what's written here makes it seem pretty much like in order to make such a request, you'd have to hire a lawyer to figure out if you meet these requirements or not. I don't know, I think we're still waiting to figure out the precise provisions, but a lot of the discussion and a lot of what gets the situation we're in is the, is this parameter about certain commissioners questioning the claim of other commissioners as to these requirements. Frankly, that's what I think has sort of taken us down this rabbit hole. And, you know, I, I just don't see what's served by, uh, this approach. I think if we, um, meet the requirements by allowing members to make a claim, uh, we're consistent with the law, and it should be on, it should be the burden of someone challenging it, whether they wish to challenge somebody's, uh, stated objective, so those are my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leif, anybody else?
Yeah, I think we, we need to bear in mind that we've had three members that chose the reasons that they chose, and, and which led to two or three different half hour or more discussions, but if one other member used the same reason for a personal reason, there would be no quorum, there would be no meeting, there would be no discussion. We've got to have a quorum if we're gonna move forward with the, with the county's business.
True.
So, therefore, that's what, that's what's wrong about the whole thing about the challenge. We.
Don't see the connection.
You don't see the connection.
Right.
You wouldn't have the discussion if one more member used the same reason, and we allowed it.
Uh, we're at risk of going down this rabbit hole again.
But it's not a rabbit hole, it's, it's.
Well, the fact there's a commit, uh, okay, no, let's go one time. Sorry, are you done?
No, I'm just saying, if there's, if one more commission member did the same thing, even, even if that one member used the personal. They didn't show up, there would be no quorum, there would be no discussion, there would have been no vote, there would have been no meeting.
I, I.
There would have been no work done.
Okay.
So that's why we chose, I didn't actually make the challenge, but I seconded the motion because I think that it's a very important issue.
Okay, thank you. Wait a minute, you already had your term, let's, you all get another shot. Mr. Shuland, do you have anything to add?
I just want to keep this done, I want to keep moving forward.
All right, but what about the amendments, you want to, are you in favor of doing something tonight, or what?
Yeah, so if we just looked at it, let's just do it at the next work session or next meeting.
Well, we can, wait a minute, we can't, we can't do it at a work session, because there's something in the rules of procedure, thanks to Mr. Leif, that we can't put on any day of work session, uh, that it will become effective the next meeting, and the next meeting, we're gonna be in the same boat we were in at the la- at the last Wednesday. And I also do not want to spend another 35 seconds on this.
It's very, Mr. Chairman, I want to say, I think it's very clear that if you want to participate with Zoom, either you have a personal reason, or you have a medical reason. This umbrella of the governor that has put out there, it is not the fourth item. So I think this clarifies that you got a select number of things that, that you can do, and otherwise, you gotta be here, so.
That's a very good point, the governor's umbrella, as you put it, does not cover a public body. It never did.
All right, well, is that a motion, Mr. Henry, to adopt it?
Yes, sir.
All right, is, is there a second? I want to make one amendment to his motion, I noticed, well, I want to, these, several places where it said the board member or of the boards are to be struck, and also one place it said prohibited, prohibits, about the middle of page 2, that the disability or medical condition, I want to change prohibits to prevents, which is the statutory word, prevents. So that's my amendment.
Mr. Chair, if you have a hand raised, I don't know how you're anymore.
Who's handed it?
Does that matter?
Well, public comment's over, so, sorry, no. All right, uh, so, uh, that's my amendment, so do we have a second to the, Mr. Henry's motion as it was with the amendments?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Leif.
Uh, with respect to the comments earlier, I agree with everything you said about the need to have a quorum present. I fail to see how, in the light of having a quorum present, whether allowing the other members to participate electronically in any way jeopardizes the progress of the commission and undermines the work, so. I don't, that's what I'm, I don't see the point.
I, I understand your point, and I, I think, I think technically, that, that's sort of right, but I think, if, I don't want to put words in Mr. Frazier's mouth, I think what he was saying is, if, if this kind of loosey-goosey option is floating around out there, it, it sort of encourages people to, to say, well, I'm, if being concerned about getting a medical condition is the same as having a medical condition, then, well, maybe I'll just stay out, and I don't have to take a shower, and get dressed up, and put on a nice shirt, and comb my hair, I can sit here and attend the meeting in my underwear, in front of my computer. And that sort of leads to, we might not have a quorum, we almost didn't have one tonight, I'll tell you.
Well, I understand, but to that point.
Okay, I appreciate your point, and I.
Well, but to take this approach where you practically have to hire a lawyer.
You don't have to hire a lawyer.
And to exclude, uh, you know, I think in the situation you described, a reasonable challenge could be put forward. Uh, but, you know, I think we've, we've been around.
This, this says the same thing as what the statute says, and it's, and it's based on what Mr. Gernhardt told you, what I read before, and I don't want to go through it all again.
I want to have Mike raise his hand for Mr. Gernhardt, will you give me one with this?
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, any further discussion? All right, we've got to take a roll call vote and sign this thing, so, Mr. Henry, you made the motion. Uh, right, and Mr. Frazier seconded the motion. Uh, so, let's take a vote from the bottom up, Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Shuland.
Aye.
Mrs. Shi is absent. Mr. Kohler is absent. Uh, Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Leif.
No.
May, all right, uh, and Mr. Conick, I'm gonna vote aye. So it carries four to one. As amended, thank you. Today's 6:24. All right, is there any other further business to come before the commission tonight? All right, I want to thank you all for coming, and those who participated electronically, I thank you for participating electronically.
This is me, Mr. Henry.
And.
This is the adjourned or continued?
I don't know, nobody's made, I don't.
I'm gonna look at the adjourned.
All right, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Henry seconded, any further discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming, thank you, Stan.